And good evening and welcome to City Focus. I'm Marty Olson, your host, and I'm delighted to welcome back to the program Sarah Turner. Sarah is a Republican candidate for the New London School Board. We do have local elections coming up in early November, and Sarah, welcome back.
Thank you so much, Marty. I'm really happy to be here.
Well, you're, from my perspective, a highly viable candidate for the school board, and I want to give you every opportunity to get your message out there. I think that you'd be a real asset to the group.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. You know, I never really imagined or viewed myself as ever really wanting to go into politics. I don't really look at myself as a politician, but I have to say, over the years of investing my time and my energy and how passionate I feel about children and their education, I'm really motivated to make some positive changes within the district, you know? And not, obviously, it's a board of people, so they wouldn't be my decisions to make. But I realize that when things get difficult in life, I find that going back to the prescribed rules that you have available to you, it's important to go back and read those ideas or missions and values. And I've been doing a lot of that recently with the New London School District mission and values, and I find that there's a lot of discrepancies between what's being practiced and what's written. And so, simple things like that, just reviewing your policies and procedures, are they being followed? How are we evaluating one another? How are we evaluating ourselves? You know, very simple things can be done to turn around some of the chaos, I feel, that's been happening, that a lot of people have been talking about, when it comes to city council, the Board of Ed. Just seems like there's a lot of time spent on chaos and not on productive work to make it better for our kids and our families in the community.
Yeah, well, a strong educational system is critical for any community to flourish. And if you've got a district that is flailing or failing, it certainly is not an environment that's going to encourage young couples with children, or young couples maybe considering a family, to either moving into or staying in New London because they'll vacate if the schools aren't producing.
Or they'll send their kids out of the district, because now we have choice of schools, right? And that still costs our district money to send kids to other magnet schools. Transportation costs and whatnot are increasing all the time, and so we really want to do our best to keep as many residents in New London to keep their kids in the New London school system, and the way that they do that is by finding value in the services being provided. You know, on the other side of that, as a taxpayer, you know, I've been frustrated with not knowing where my money is always being spent. You know, I work hard. I'm in real estate. Maybe that's why I look at challenges from a place of contracts, because all day I'm reading contracts or writing contracts. And so, maybe that's why I like to go back to the rules. I like to understand what the parameters are, but as a taxpayer, I'd like to know where my money's going. And I have no problem working hard to pay taxes as long as I can see, you know, where it's being spent, and that is then...
You like to think you're getting some value.
Absolutely. Value. And, you know, it's not...
Even if you know where it's being spent, if it's being spent poorly, you don't want that.
That's right. That's right. Like, just because we're spending it doesn't mean that it's doing anything for us, right? You know, we pay the superintendent a lot of money. We pay several administrators a lot of money. And the school, actually, since I was last year, last year in July, I believe, school has now begun. And I have to say, it was so rocky and is still rocky. It is worse this year than it has been any other year. And if you ask the current administration why that is, I have gotten feedback that it's because of "flat funding," right? This term "flat funding" that is being used again and again. But "flat funding," it shouldn't be "flat funding," I guess, is my point. It is, it is, we were given the same amount of money that we were given last year, and there is this rhetoric kind of running in the background that, you know, city council should know and the mayor should know that because they sign the contracts for teachers and administrators, that they are aware of, you know, the contractual increases to salaries, right? Okay, I guess you could say that, but the common sense would be if the city council and the mayor can't tell the Board of Education how to spend their money, why would they be going through the contracts to make sure that they were, you know, allocating enough funds to cover the contracts? Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, it's, you know, one thing in the public often, I don't think, recognizes is, I'm quite frankly, not sure that some of our elected officials are aware of this. But, I mean, the school board, the school district prepares their budget, and then it gets sent to the council for approval. They'll look at it. They can amend and make cuts and/or add, for that matter, and then it gets sent to the mayor for a signature. The mayor can accept it and sign it, or he can veto it. But the council and the mayor do not have line item discretion.
That's right. That's right.
So, I mean, the council may say, "Well, we don't think that you need that."
Yep.
And the school board can say, "Tough."
That's right.
So, you have that, that friction is built in. And not necessarily, I think, for the, it doesn't encourage the council to be using a scalpel when they do this. They can use a meat cleaver.
Very true. No, it is very true, and it's, it's difficult, right? As I've spent a lot of time looking at our budget, this year's adopted budget for the school district. I have been paying attention now the last few years. It is really hard to follow what is being spent where. Like, they have a total amount that are spent on certain programs, but you don't really know how that really equates in the end, especially throughout the year. In the finance committee meetings, there will be big purchases made time and time again for floor polishers. $15,000 for a floor polisher. We got one at the end...
That's the equipment.
Right. The end of 2024, we had a floor polisher. At the beginning of 2025, we had a floor polisher in another school. And, you know, in the, when the city council has to, when they propose spending money outside of a certain amount, they will get multiple bids, because that's what the city charter prescribes for them to do. In the district, the school district, we don't seem to have that process. It's very simply, it gets, comes from our financial director. He just, you know, presents it to the board, and they either ask a question or approve it. It's not, "Well, what was wrong with the last floor scrubber? What would have been the estimate from a couple different places to repair it? What is the benefit that we would get from purchasing a new one? Would it be better if we leased it?" Right? I know that we do have contracts for copiers, printers, but I also am aware at the schools right now that there, many are not working and many don't have toner. So, how are the teachers to do their jobs if they don't have the tools necessary to be able to do those jobs? And it's just the beginning of the school year. And the difficulty is, is that if I was to ask someone on the Board of Ed, they may respond with, "Well, this is what you get with flat funding." But we can't just wrap everything up to this term "flat funding." Yes. Do we need everyone to contribute? Do we, should education be funded? Absolutely, 100%. But we also need to be managing the people that are managing the money, right? And ensuring that it is getting spent as it is voted on during public process, not just behind the scenes, you know? And another part of the Board of Education process that I don't enjoy over the last couple of years has been that there's really not, it's not really accessible to all, right? So, we have this community engagement. We lack community engagement. They want more participation from parents in families and teachers, right? But if we don't make the meetings accessible, yes, we have a Zoom link. Yes, you have to be approved to log into that Zoom link, so they know who's there and who's not. I'm not quite sure why we're pre-screening people to allow them to come into Board of Ed meetings. I did hear from someone once that, I guess, at some point in time, I don't recall, there were comments and things happening by angry parents, I guess, that were really disruptive to the meetings, so they decided to, you know, be more rigorous in who they allowed into the meetings and whatnot. But the reality is, people are busy. They can't always come to a meeting, and they should not have to be approved to see the video. They should be able to have access to it, and it should live online. So, if, for example, with the city council, you know, if I can't make it to a city council meeting, I know I can go right to YouTube. I can watch it at my leisure while I'm making dinner, while I'm making breakfast, while I'm doing laundry, and I can get caught up what's happening within the local politics. But you can't do that with the Board of Ed. You can't even verify if the minutes are actually legitimate, because half of the time the audio system doesn't work. You know, I got three videos recently because I had to leave a little early, or there were some things that I was just questioning, so I wanted to hear it again. You know, and granted, we are very thin on staff, so I'm not blaming the person in, you know, responsible for doing it. I actually offered the person assistance in what I can do to try to help to alleviate some of that pressure from this person. But again, this should be the job of the Board of Education, right? I'm just not sure why it's not taking place, you know?
Well, a lot of, a lot of that is how informed board members are, how aware they are of their own job. Also, in New London, we do not have a minority party representation, so the school board, as well as the city council and mayor's office right now, are all Democrats. So, we, you don't have any real diversity of thought or challenge to the status quo.
That's right.
From one who has served as well as observed, when you don't have any members of the minority party, or Green Party for that matter, it tends to be, go along to get along, and you don't see the administration challenged very often. And if they do, it's rarely in public.
That's right.
So, the general public wouldn't even know.
That's right. Well, you know, it is a problem. It's a problem even going all the way up to the state level, right? I mean, I have been, as I mentioned last time, you know, discussing with the State Department of Education several of my concerns as it comes to the way that the district is being run, as the district is being overseen. And, you know, there's really, it's when it is all one party, there's really not much productivity. There's no reason for people to want to act in a way that represents more than just one opinion or voice, right? We need to have many people at the table bringing their concerns.
I mean, it can be exasperating if you get elected, especially if you're the only Republican, or even if there's two or three for that matter.
Right.
But if you're in the minority position, the majority can and often just will ignore the minority. But the key is that the minority is there with a presence.
That's right.
And can articulate their points.
That's right.
And it gives the public at large something to think about. These guys can caucus and do all their business in a caucus and come into a meeting and have everything done and just bang, 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 and there's no discussion.
That's right. That's right. We really just need to have access. There's just something really not, that doesn't sit well with me, to not be able to have a public process public, right? And that really is concerning. I mean, it's hard for me not to think that the reason why nobody has any desire to fix the audio on the recordings is because they don't want anyone to hear what's being said.
And they don't have to.
Right. So, you know, all they have an obligation to really do is provide whatever's in the meeting minutes, you know? And when we are depending all on one party, who are all probably going to agree that they are correct and not question it.
Well, I mean, look what's happened with the Democrats through this cycle so far. You've had one member of the school board who's challenged the mayor, and one member of the council, who's a former school board member, challenged the mayor on the education budget, the "flat funding" you alluded to earlier, and those two were, didn't get nominated.
Right.
So, they paid a price.
That's right.
Now, the city had to pay for a primary, $20,000, just so that the incumbent councillor could get back on the ticket. And apparently, at the board level, one of the members withdrew, so that the gal who did not get nominated was able to slide back on as a defile of vacancy.
Right. Right.
But, I mean, the shenanigans, it's just, having to pay that kind of a price, I just think is, speaks volumes about the lack of accountability that those in charge want. They want it their way, no discussion. It's my way or the highway, and if you're going to challenge us, you're going to pay.
Well, you know, it really, it comes down to doing the right thing. I think that in today's day and age, we just want people to be elected that are going to do the right thing. Just do the right thing. It's not that hard. I mean, I don't feel it's that, I feel it's not that hard, but maybe because I have not been in a seat to this point, that shows me otherwise. But I do feel that by doing the right thing, by representing our constituents, the people that were there to protect and serve, we should be able to do it. It shouldn't be...
Like students.
Yes, absolutely. Students, teachers, families. And if you go out, so, for example, I was at the open house last night talking to parents. You know, there is a lot of commentary and commotion about not being satisfied. You know, it's difficult when teachers and students go to school and there's no consistency, right? So, every day, they'll go to school, and there might be a new, you know, rule or policy put in place, not from the Board of Education standpoint, because the Board of Ed creates the policies and procedures that then the superintendent, you know, directs down to the other employees of the district. But we're at the high school, and every day, my kid goes to school, and there's some new policy, some new direction, a new hallway that they can't go down, that the principal themselves is not even aware of. Who's creating the rules in the school? And why is it every day that somebody new, whoever that person that is, can just create a rule, implement it, without any type of procedural process? How are things changing in the school without the direction of the principal? What are we paying the principal to do if he's not able to manage his or her school? And that is concerning. Then it just makes me wonder, well, why do we have so many administrators if they're not able to do their jobs? We're paying them to do a job. They should be able and allowed and given the empowerment to decide where their money's going to go, how much money they're going to need. I mean, it does say in our policies and procedures that that will be the process that is taken, but time and time again, I see it's not. I actually was at a booster meeting last week, because this year, as last year, at the high school, we didn't have a marching band. We didn't have the resources. We didn't have the funds. We didn't have the teachers to support it. So...
And that's sad, because two years ago, the band was so good. They were chosen to go to Washington and participate, I think it was Memorial Day, but it was a big parade in Washington, DC. That was heady stuff.
It was, and I did, I chaperoned on that trip. It was amazing. It was an amazing opportunity for the chaperones that went on the trip and for the students. It really, it really was an opportunity like no other for them to have, to have that chance to march down in Washington, DC. It was great. But, you know, we went from that to nothing the following year when it came to marching band. And so, with that said, this school year, because last school year, we only had one band teacher split between the high school and the middle school, not the campus, not the one single campus, so between Benny Dover and the multi-magnet campus. And so, obviously, as one person, she couldn't do all the different programs. She had to do the basics. So, with that in mind, this year, we were under the impression we were not going to have a marching band at the high school. So, we were contacted by Eastlime High School, who offered our students, who had been in marching band, or even if they hadn't an opportunity, to participate in Eastlime's marching band at no cost to our district.
Do we have any students taking advantage of that?
We do. We have four. We have four. My daughter being one of them and three other students. So, this summer, they went to an intensive band camp, where they did band camp from 9:00 in the morning to 8:00 PM at night.
Wow.
Six days out of the week. I mean, that was, that was tough. That was tough for them in the heat of the summer, but I have to say, it was the most amazing opportunity for them, again, no cost to our district. Now, of course, I felt that, you know, this was such an amazing opportunity, this is what the superintendent has been talking about, collaborating services, right? We're going to partner with other communities to bridge the gap when it comes to budget, you know, deficits and funding deficits. And so, I actually even met with a local reporter from the day, telling him about how amazing this was and that he should write a story about it. Well, then I called the, the school because I wanted to set up my child's, meet with her guidance counselor to make sure she had, had registered for the right classes, because we hadn't done that yet. We did it at the end of the school year, but I just wanted to confirm that those classes were the ones she was going to be taking. And at that time, I learned from the director of Magnet Pathways that she was not aware of the partnership with the Eastlime High School and was not very pleased to hear about it.
Why not?
So, she had just hired a new band teacher, which we weren't aware of. Now, mind you, this is less than a week before school starts, and so I asked her, I said, "Well, are we going to have a marching band this year?" And she goes, "Well, no, we're not going to have a marching band this year. There's just no way we can do that, but we will have one in the future." And I said, "Well, great. Well, then we should honor these kids' commitment to participate in this opportunity, because we can't wait years and years and years for us to have a marching band. They only have so many years of high school." So, school starts. Kids are continuing to, to march with Eastlime. Well, then, three weeks into the school year, New London decides on a Thursday, two days before the first competition with Eastlime, that they were going to mandate and implement and create a marching band at the high school, demanding that the kids honor their commitments to New London and not complete their commitment to Eastlime. Now, mind you, we don't have a plan in place yet with the, the new band teacher, right? It's not, it's not set in stone yet. It hasn't been created. It is underway. But why would we ask kids to not compete and just march, you know, after school when they have this great opportunity? It did take a lot of negotiating, a lot of advocating. It did get a little hairy there, because I really thought that the kids were not going to be able to complete their, their commitments to Eastlime, but they did. In the end, they did. They just had their first, well, they've had two competitions now. They've done really well. The band, the new band teacher is in support of them doing this other marching band.
Are they participating in marching at football games?
So, there is marching taking place at the football games.
At Eastlime?
So, in New London, there's marching happening. It's a pep band, right? Pep band. So, they do have a pep band. Now, the four students I'm speaking of have not participated yet in a football game with New London, just because we have conflicting schedules, right? Since they already committed to, so they have not. They have not participated in, or marched in a football game with Eastlime. But either way, I think that it is a stepping stone for opportunity of what shared services could look like moving forward, right? A way for us to maybe save on our budget a bit while providing our students exceptional opportunities in other communities.
And that's being done athletically throughout the state of Connecticut, the consolidated teams. I mean, you have a couple of schools that are small, and they can't field a football team or a soccer team, so they may have, well, I happened to do a radio broadcast with Mike McLaughlin a couple of weeks ago, and it was with Fitch and Abbott Tech, Immaculate from the other end of the state. She had Abbott Tech and Immaculate combining to form a team, so the kids could play. And they do that around here as well, I mean, with different sports. And, you know, if they are able to do that with other programs, I mean, that makes it, it certainly was not available when I was a kid. You were at your town school, and that was it. There was no magnet schools.
Right.
So, things have changed a lot, but that gets to another point. I mean, New London is a complete magnet district, K through 12, and this was foisted on us about a dozen years ago. And, you know, we have to meet certain benchmarks of students coming in from out of district to get the appropriate funding that is the driver of this. And if we're not meeting it, you know, I don't know if we're getting the funding or not. I suspect we may not, or not getting it in full. You may know better than that, because you're following it more closely. But I, you know, why would a parent send their kids into the New London district if they're not performing well, or if things are a little bit chaotic? It's easier to stay home.
That's right. And some parents are choosing to do that in New London. There's a big community of homeschooling, parents that are chose to homeschool their, their kids, because they don't want to deal with the chaos of what's happening in the school district. It's unpredictable. It does prevent kids from learning. You know, if we're trying to provide this sense of safety and security and provide a learning environment that is stable, that promotes the most educational opportunities possible, it has to be predictable. You cannot go to school every day and not know what the next thing is that's going to happen. Let me give you another example. So, there was a couple of weeks into school, my child was, all the arts kids, for that matter, were pulled out of their curriculum school day unbeknownst to parents and everyone, actually unbeknownst to the, to the principal once again. He was not aware of this event taking place. It was well-intended, you know? It was to be a motivational, it was a motivational speaker, but I guess no one really, you know, reviewed the content prior to its delivery. And it actually led to some discussions being had that were not very appropriate for the, the students to be hearing. I, I did express my concerns to the school district. I wrote them and sent them over. I'm still waiting for a formal response on those. And actually, at the end of the assembly, mind you, not all kids went. So, my kid was in a class with other students that are Science and Technology Magnet and International Pathway, and only the arts kids had to leave and not... and only the arts kids had to leave and not finish their test um because they needed to go to this motivational assembly. And at the end of the assembly, they actually passed out flyers recruiting the kids to church on Sunday. Uh, you know, I, again, I, I really can't speak to what happens from there because, like I said, I've, I've submitted my concerns in writing to the, the school district and I did um, I did speak with the director of Magnet Pathways and, and I still have not um had a response on that yet. And again, it just goes back to having there be predictable services and educational experiences, right? What happened to the days where we would put out a notice and say, hey, families, you know, and students, we have this opportunity to have this motivational speaker come in. You would be missing first or second period, it would include content like this. If you are um of a particular religion or do not wanna participate because it is focused towards said, this other religion, you know, please feel free that you have an opportunity to opt out, just let us know. You see what I'm saying? Like, then you have the right to choose. But if you don't have a right to choose because you don't know what you're doing, you're just called to go to an assembly and then you're there. It, it, something's not, something's just not right, right? Are you following me? It's just, it's just not predictable, but I do wanna go back to something that you mentioned a couple of minutes ago about being the first all magnet district.
Yes.
Because that is a very tricky thing to say, because we're not technically approved as an all magnet district yet. So although we have been advertising that we are an all magnet district, we are not fully magnetized. Which then brings up some other considerations, like, okay, well, if we are advertising that we're an all magnet district, but we have three potential pathways at, let's say, for example, the um multi magnet high school campus, that means that the magnet funds that are allocated for, let's say, arts and STEM, because those two pathways are approved, have to then be also shared with a third non-magnetized program. So when we're advertising to bring students in from out of district, we're not saying, oh, hey, we have this special program, but by the way, we're gonna be sharing your funds that are allocated to your special program with this other program that's not magnetized yet, we're not telling people that. So is that giving them a right to choose? I've asked the State Department of Education the same question, I'm still waiting for a response. So, you know, I'm, I'm not sure, but it doesn't make me feel good that I feel that, you know, I have invested my time, my taxes, my, my student in this district, just to find that as we're getting to the end of her, you know, secondary educational experience, now all of a sudden it comes out, well, because we don't have the COVID funds anymore, because we don't have these extra funds, and maybe we didn't spend them all appropriately, like, maybe we should have bought all the floor polishers then? Maybe.
I mean, you know, the, the uh, the schools as well as the city, I think both uh abused the COVID money, I mean, they were paying for additional personnel, new programs, that there was no plan for funding once the COVID money dried up.
Well, you know, I will say in all fairness, I did hear from um a reliable source from the, uh, believe they were from the city, um, who shared that they were in the meeting when the funds were being given um to the school district. And it was made very clear by the mayor at that time, don't make the mistake and create new programs with this funds because you won't be able to sustain them after that, so you need to have a plan. Do not put it into new hires that are gonna be needed long-term. Um, be aware of that, but for some reason, we created a year-round calendar program that is still going. This year was the most disastrous year ever starting school, at least at the high school level. We weren't able to meet with guidance counselors, we weren't even able to schedule an appointment with a guidance counselor till two days after school started because the school said, we want the kids to try their classes first. I'm sorry, for me as a parent, the most important day I teach my kids is the first day, why? Because the teacher is setting the tone of expectations, telling you what you're gonna be learning over the course of the year. And if you miss that, you're missing out on an opportunity that the other students have. So why, in goodness gracious, would we want to mandate that students start and try their classes first if we haven't had a meeting to determine if they meet the graduation goals? That doesn't seem right. And it wasn't right, because then, three days into the school year, when we did finally have a meeting with the guidance counselor, um, you know, my student did kind of have a ricochet moment, right? Where when her classes did change, she was feeling that she had some duty to the other teacher in the other classes that she changed out of, she was feeling guilty that she left some of her friends behind, which it all could have been avoided if we were just given access to our guidance counselors like we were in previous years. Now, mind you, the contract didn't change for the guidance counselors. They are still contracted to come in five days before the start of school and stay five days after the end of school. The difference is that whatever was happening or whatever wasn't happening, whatever didn't happen this summer, something happened that prevented them from being able to see students and families before the start of the school year. And their contract didn't change. So even if somebody says, oh, well, we were flat funded, we couldn't, we couldn't see, no, the contract was still there. They still got paid for those days. What were they doing during those days that they couldn't see students? And, in all fairness, if, 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 if it was decided by the powers that be, by the Board of Ed, by the superintendent, that it was in the student's best interest to not meet with their guidance counselors, I can get behind that.
Well, you know, there's this level of, I don't know, turmoil is the right word, but uh, again, it's what are we doing as a district that's going to encourage our neighbors to send their children into, into our district?
That's right.
And if it appears to be we're not delivering the goods, it's a little bit chaotic, it's, it's, it's not an environment that's gonna encourage.
Right. And we have to listen, right? I mean, listening, listening to what the kids have to say. That has been the biggest driver of, of, of a lot of my passion, in addition to the teachers, right? There are some incredible teachers and, and administrators and staff over the years that have been there, that have poured their heart and souls out into the district, not for the money, even though they should be paid more, right? I absolutely believe that teachers should be paid more, I think they do way too much work, they are the front line, and they should be compensated accordingly. They should be given a budget so that they don't have to wonder if their students are gonna come in with pencils. I mean, really, it doesn't encourage any student to write, just use your computer. Well, no wonder the kids can't write these days, because they don't know how, they never were forced to, right? They, 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 they're not being prepared for life. Um, and, you know, it starts with empowering.
And that is critical, that mean, they, prepared for life. And that could be a variety of things, it could mean going on to college, it could mean going into the military, could mean getting a job. I mean, this, it's not just one thing, there's a variety of things getting prepared for. I know as one who ran a construction business, I'd like to know that if I'm hiring somebody from New London High, that they can read a ruler.
Right. That's right. No, it is, I will say, on a positive note, because I've made a, a lot of, of, of other comments, I will say the um junior ROTC program this year is flourishing. They have more than double the students they had last year. Last year, I think they had sixty students, they have an additional ninety students in the junior ROTC program this year for a total of a hundred and fifty students, which is amazing, it's a great program um that is drawing students in from out of the district because people are excited to be in that program, even if they don't plan on going into the services long-term. Um, so really, having that has been great. Um, my daughter actually said to me today, um, mom, I'm really frustrated in chemistry, and I'm like, what's going on? She said, well, you know, whenever we do a lab, there's four groups, but there's only enough supplies for three groups to do the lab. Which means one group has to wait to the side for the other groups to finish. Well, my group was the one that had to wait to the side today, and then we ran out of time to be able to do our lab. She's like, that's the second time that's happened to us. So the teacher did say that she will allow us a little bit of time to do it next period. But it just seems like, again, right, like, what's happening to the STEM funds? Where are the STEM funds? Where are they going? Where are they being spent? How are they being spent? We had a really great STEM program, we still do have some really amazing teachers. But we have to give them what they need to be able to teach. If they're not able to conduct labs in the labs.
That's not a good, that's not good.
Right. And I was made aware last week, oh, I started to say this earlier at the booster meeting. Apparently, um, there is a large pocket of money that falls under the non-staffing magnet funds that can be used for anything related to not staffing. Well, if we have that money to potentially create or back a new marching band, how come we can't get an extra set of lab supplies in the chemistry room?
Yep.
Right? So things just really aren't lining up. And um, I think, again, it goes back to reading the prescribed rules, policies and procedures. Are we, how are we doing it? Evaluating the superintendent, how is she evaluating her team? Is the principal, or are the principals at their schools responsible for their staff and their budgets? How are they being evaluated? How are their jobs doing? Superintendent cannot run every school directly. She has to empower the people at the schools to do what they need to do, who then can empower those that are teaching our students to do what they need to do. But if we are just micromanaging from the top, which kind of appears like what we're doing, it's, it's not gonna work. It is just waiting, it's just a mountain waiting to get knocked down.
Well, the uh, this is the time with an election for our community and all communities. If you're not satisfied with the status quo, here's your opportunity to make a change.
Right.
I think you're a quality candidate, I open with that, and I hope that you're successful on Election Day, and I don't care who you knock out, knock somebody out.
Thank you.
But, you know, I think that, and we're only running the Republican Party, two candidates, you and John Martin. I also think John is a quality candidate, I mean, the guy has spent twenty years in the district, he knows it like the back of his hand. And I think that he would bring a level of credibility to the board, uh, in inside knowledge that many of the folks currently serving just don't have, and probably never will. And they don't put in the effort and time that you're putting in now, and have been the last handful of years while your kids are in, in school.
Right.
You know, not, you know, most parents don't go that extra mile.
You know, and um, it wasn't.
For a variety of reasons, it's not.
Right. Oh, of course, not, not because they're not interested, right? But, you know, um, for myself, I have been blessed with a job that has provided me, you know, the opportunity to spend that time. As being a realtor, I'm able to make my own schedule, um, adjust things as I need because I'm running my own business. And um, that, I've been very fortunate in that. Um, so, you know, I do, there was a time where I was not in this career many years ago, and I was not afforded the time um to be able to really dedicate as much time to, to learning and researching and, and really trying to understand what's happening and how it's affecting my child at school. Um, so I, I, I will say that I completely relate to other parents that just wish they had the time and they don't, because I was one uh, many years ago.
Yeah.
But, you know, it, again, it comes down to, like you said, the election, right? We really need to know, look at, look at people's, um, you know, what they're doing now, right? Have they been serving on the Board of Ed? Have they been serving on the City Council? What have they been doing? How have they contributed? Are they the, the chair? Are they the president? Um, do they lead well? Um, has there been a lot of turnover, right? Is there a lot of people that don't show up? That reflects on the, the leader of the group. And if that leader has not been able to effectively um lead the team, which then leads, uh, superintendent that leads an entire district and community of students, then maybe it's time for a change, right?
I certainly think that there's room for change, I mean, as you noted at the top, the, the school board is, is all, all of one party. And uh, that's just not a healthy environment for anybody, for the students, for the, the administration, teachers. Uh, you need, you need quality discussions and debates on the issues that are on hand. And when you don't get that, it, it, I think it holds back the district and it creates many of the issues that you've discussed this evening.
Right. No, and really, you know, there has been um one seat every week. I can't tell you for how long it has been vacant. Every time I show up to a Board of Ed meeting, there's just a nameplate there. And I don't know if they've come to a meeting at all this year since, maybe they came to the budget season meetings, but it, it's been a long time. And, you know, as somebody leading the, the Board of Ed, I would say, hey, listen, if you're not invested or you don't have the time, or you've had other things come up and you're not able to commit, why don't you allow somebody else to, you know, step in that will be able to invest the time and commitment? Because net, now it's like we're running with only six members instead of seven, right? Um, that isn't right either. And then with all the turnover, it's like there's really only one or two or three running the show, which isn't really fair, again, because then the bulk of the work is on just a couple people. We need people that are really gonna invest the time and commitment to seeing it through, not just for the election, getting elected, sitting on there, you know, and then, I, I don't, I'm not sure quite what would happen, I don't wanna speculate too far on that, but clearly, it's just um, we need to get people in that are going to commit to doing it and seeing it through.
And that's a responsibility of, of the political parties, is to nominate candidates who can do the job, not just fill, fill a slot or a chair.
That's right. You know, talking about filling a chair, so um, actually, one of the um uh, topics within the District Improvement Plan, that has been part of the District Improvement Plan for many years now is um, you know, uh, increasing the communication with families and the community. It seems that there is a lot of um tension and uncertainty when it comes to that. So, they created a, a sub, subcommittee of the Board of Ed um that was specifically tasked with just this, called a Community Information Committee. Well, on the night that it was voted on, the, the committee was approved, I was the only person in attendance. So they said they were gonna need a community member, maybe a parent, a teacher, a few board members. So I volunteered as tribute. Well, the next day, I received back an email saying that they were very sorry, but um, there was so much interest in the community seat or parent's seat that um, there was no room for me at that time. Now, mind you, I'm one of the only people that shows up to just about every meeting and have been showing up to every meeting and been communicating with the Board of Ed and, and with the schools. So um, that's okay, I wasn't selected, I'll still go and, and attend the meeting. So several months later, we recently just had the first meeting. I did attend as the one person there on behalf of the public um and listened to the conversation unfold, talking about how they want to really bridge the gap of lack of communication. So after the meeting, one of the board members came up to me and said, you know, Sarah, we always uh value what you have to say, and we'd like to hear from the community, since this is a Community Information Committee. Um, you know, if you have any ideas, send me a text. Great. So a few hours later, I had been thinking about it, and I thought, you know, trust. Trust is just big, right? If we know that we can trust the word of those in positions of power, um, we can have that transparency, accountability, things would naturally get better. So I called, I left a message. Didn't hear anything, never heard anything back. So I go to the Board of Ed. So, I go to the Board of Ed meeting on, on Monday and I share my frustration with how do you say that we have a lack of, uh, community engagement and you want to repair uh, the, the conversation that's happening to, to, to have a better, you know, community overall. But then you just don't call back when you invited the feedback. Well, a couple of the board members got very defensive with that comment. And, um, they started passing notes back and forth during the meeting. And, um, then one of them addressed me and said, listen, I have the evidence right here. I have the evidence right here. I want to put it on the record that I, I sent you an email because I've decided that the best way for me to communicate with constituents is via my board-approved asset. Okay? So, that's your email. So, is that a new policy? Is that a new procedure where constituents are not able to talk directly with board members anymore? Now, they are only able to communicate via email. Well, come to find out, because I never received that email, the next day, I received an email with an apology saying, Sarah, I'm so sorry. I missed the H in your email address, so that's why you never got the email. Again, talking about consistency, you know, knowing what to expect. Are you having the same rules for everybody? Or are you just signaling me out because I'm running for a seat on the Board of Ed? I'm not sure, but that should not be a question that comes up in my mind because we should be, you should be representing constituents. I'm still a constituent, I'm still a parent. Um, you know, I, I bring my concerns and I, I believe I have value to add just by me continuing a conversation. And it is disappointing when you have people in elected positions that decide that they are the right to decide who gets to participate and who doesn't. I know if I was on the Board of Ed and I had parents coming in saying, hey, listen, I have something to say, I, I have something to give, I'd say, okay, great, let's get, let's get another committee going. Let's get your, your take on there, let's make a couple of extra seats so that we can get that input and that, in that feedback. Um, you know, it really is important if we are going to have a quality school district, building that trust amongst each other, within the school system, within the community, within the elected officials is just imperative.
Absolutely. Well, I have to tell you, the, the hour has sped by.
Oh, gosh, it's already over.
And, uh, it is, we're going to have to have you back at least one more time before the election. But I want to thank you for carving out an hour this evening and being on City Focus. You're always very informative and I, I, I love your passion for the task at hand here. And I hope that the public will respond to that and you will achieve success in November. But thank you so much.
Thank you, Marty, it's been a pleasure.
And we'll, uh, we'll get Sarah back before and you get a chance to meet some of the other candidates between now and Election Day. But you've been watching City Focus, we want to thank you. And it's time to say a good night.